This conference will now be recorded.
All right, Stacy, are we good?
Is Tom here? Is Tom Ackley in?
Tom is on.
Okay, thank you. Good to go.
All right. It is now 7:00 PM on June 25th, 2020, and I call this meeting of the Bellevue Planning Commission to order. Pursuant to Governor's Executive Order 2003 and extended by Order 2024, said meeting may be held via tele- video conference, telephone conference, or by conferencing, by other electronic means. As such, said meeting will be by a virtual meeting, and the public may join using Facebook Live via the City of Bellevue's Facebook page. For those unable to access Facebook Live, please contact the Community Relations Department to receive instructions on how to participate. Roll call.
Sorry, just a second. Eric, I'm not able to hear you. Is everybody else able to hear Eric or hear me?
Yes.
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 I can hear both of you.
Yes.
Yes, I can hear both.
Yes, can you both?
Sorry, give me a second. I'm gonna get off and get back on, okay?
Okay. On hold.
Eric, are you leading?
Everybody hear me now?
I can hear you just fine.
Can you hear us?
Sorry, I still can't hear you guys. Give us a second, okay?
Okay.
Okay.
Eric, did you hear me?
Eric, can you say something so I can test it out?
S- test? Test?
I can't hear him.
No?
Eric, did you hear me?
No, what was your question?
Are you leading?
The meeting on Spark, yes.
Yes, okay.
Tammy, can you hear us? Are you still working on it?
Sorry, I'm trying again. Can someone talk to me and see if I can hear him?
Test, test one, two.
Awesome. All right. Sorry about that, folks. Let's go ahead and get going.
All right. My current point is roll call.
Mr. Casey?
Present.
Mr. Perrin?
Here.
Mr. Kane, Ms. Kane?
Present.
Mr. Arnie?
Present.
Mr. Ritz?
Present.
Mr. Ackley?
Here.
Mr. Hankins?
Present.
Ms. Cutsforth?
Present.
Mr. Jacobson?
Present.
All right. So, this meeting will be conducted according to the Open Meetings Act, a copy of which is in the council chambers and can be found online. At this time, I would like, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes, the May 28th, 2020 regular meeting.
I would like to make a motion to...
Motion by Kane.
I'll move too.
Second, Jacobson.
Motion by Kane, second by Jacobson.
I'm sorry, I have a vacuum going out in the hallway here and I can't hear you. Give me just a second, please. Okay, uh, who made the motion?
Kane, and second by Jacobson.
Motion carried.
I didn't do anything.
Okay. Oh, I know why.
I did. This is Kane.
And, uh, motion, oh, there we go. Okay. Has everybody voted then? I just got my pop-up.
Not yet.
No. I didn't.
Ms. Kane, have you voted?
No, I cannot get it up. Um, I vote yes.
Mr. Ackley?
I abstain. I was not at last month's meeting, and I did vote on that electronically, but it maybe didn't...
I see that. Okay. Motion carried.
At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to accept into record all staff reports, attachments, memos, and handouts regarding each application. Has there been any additions that need to also be added to the record?
Yes, Mr. Chair. We did receive a letter in opposition to our first public hearing item, Agenda Item 3A. It was from the neighboring HOA, and they are in opposition to that application. Was forwarded to all Planning Commission members yesterday and will be considered part of the public record for tonight's hearing.
All right. Does anybody wish to make a motion?
This is Casey, and I'll make the motion to accept into record all staff reports, attachments, memos, handouts regarding application. Second by Hankins.
Motion by Casey, second by Hankins.
I'm trying to... Just a minute, I'm going on Bellevue. Second.
I'm sorry, Mr. Ritz. I think my audio went out again. Can you repeat that?
I saw a motion by Casey and a second by Hankins to accept into record.
Mr. Ritz, have you voted?
Now I have. Sorry.
Motion carried.
All right. Continuing on, we have no items under consent. We have two items under public hearings tonight. I will read into record each item. Then I will open the floor to the public for comments for or against each item. I reserve the right to limit each one's test, each person's testimony to no less than three minutes. At the end of the day, golden rule applies. Please treat others as you wish to be treated. The first item is Item 3A. Request to rezone lots 1 through 3, Hidden Hills 2nd Edition, being a replat of lots 43B1, 47B, and part of Lot 48B, Marion Park, all located in the north half of Section 25, Township 14, R13E of the 6th Prime Meridian, Sarpy County, Nebraska, and part of Lot 1, lying west of Canyon Road, and north 40 feet of Lot 2 and Lot 3B1, Jewel Place, all located in the southeast quarter of Section 25, Township 14 North, R13E of the 6th Prime Meridian, Sarpy County, Nebraska, from RE to RS120 for the purpose of single-family residential development. Preliminary lot lots 1 through 3, Hidden Hills 2nd Edition, and final plat lots 1 through 3, Hidden Hills 2nd Edition. Applicant Sherwood Properties, general location, Combs Road and Canyon Road. Case numbers Z-2005-04, and S-2005-09. Is the applicant present?
Yes, we are. Good evening. My name is Mark Westergaard. I'm with E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road. We are the engineers for the project. With me tonight also is Jerry Stanerker, who's the owner and subdivider, and John Foden, Anthony Kipper, and me for the project. As I've asked before, can everybody hear me? Okay. Okay. So, we just draw them. I got, I got the short strokes, so I'm gonna be doing the presentation. We have looked at this parcel of ground for a long time. We've proposed a number of different scenarios to the city over the last two or three years. What is before you this evening is a three-lot subdivision that divides the, I think there's six parcels there of very good size, and divides it into three, three separate lots. The first lot has, the furthest one to the east, Lot 1 has access off of Canyon Boulevard. Lot 3, which is the westernly lot, has, will have access off of Bellevue Boulevard. The middle lot, Lot 2, will have access over an easement that goes across Lot 1 for the property. This piece of ground is, has been held by Tru Falls for quite a while. It is a very rugged piece of ground that has trees and quite a bit of slope to it. The challenge is finding good home sites within that ground. And we think this, this particular layout, it just has three lots, which accomplishes that. There is a sanitary sewer that runs between lots 1 and 2, and this is a logical location for a property line. So, when we, we use that as a property line between lots, one of the lots, we were able to make the one acre minimum that would be required in RA. And yes, that is why we are requesting the RS120. I will tell you that RS120 is only what many of the lots around there currently have, so it's not any different to this prominent area. We are proposing to do very minimal amount of grading, just enough to get the houses in, and a very minimal amount of tree removal, just enough to get the houses and driveways in. There is only one improvement really that's needed, and it's been requested by the city, and that's that the intersection of Canyon Boulevard and Combs Road would be improved, which will be an enhancement for the neighborhood. We are aware of the letter that came from the HOA. The HOA really raised four concerns. One was traffic, one was impact on wildlife, one was impact on drainage, and the other was the impact on property values. Really, they didn't cite a lot of background about. I guess I'll just go through them one by one. Three lots really doesn't increase the traffic hardly at all compared to maybe a bigger family moving into a couple of the lots that are currently served by Canyon, Canyon Boulevard. We, the one lot will not even impact anything in Canyon and Combs because it goes out onto Bellevue Boulevard. So, we really feel that the traffic impact is very, 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 very nominal. Wildlife, I said, this is a over, about a three-acre tract, and there's just three homes. We're gonna be disturbing just the minimum that we can in order to get the home sites in. This disruption in wildlife, there's, there's just lots of acre, and most of the, most of the area is completely undisturbed. And so, again, we feel there's not hardly any disruption in habitat or for the wildlife. This piece of property sits down lower than the subdivision to the south. And so, when they say there's an impact on drainage, this, I don't see how it can impact their lots. And since we're improving the intersection and maintaining the existing storm sewer that's out there, again, we don't see any drainage. Certainly, the impact happens upstream, but even impacts downstream with so minimal amount of improvements being provided. And then, property value, item, we, these houses are probably going to be in the $350,000 range, which will be equal or higher price than the surrounding, surrounding homes. So, it's, it's hard to see how the homes that will be built here could have any impact on property values at all. So, the staff has gone through this. We work with them. If, there is no exceptions or technical deficiencies. So, I would request to improve this evening, and Jerry, or John, or I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, thank you. A quick note, as a reminder, if you are not speaking, please make sure that your mic is muted so that we don't have any echoes. Thank you again for the presentation. The floor is now open for anyone from the public that wishes to speak for or against this matter. If you do, when you do, please state your name and address for the record. Not seeing anyone stepping up right now. Is there anybody on Facebook Live that has made any comments or statements?
One moment, Mr. Chair, and we'll check. The Facebook Live feed has a little bit of a delay, so give us about 10 seconds.
We would like to speak if that's okay.
Yep, I, look.
Everybody hear me okay? Yeah. Um, this, we're Haley and Ben Rizzo. We live at 840 Hidden Hills, so we're pretty much kind of diagonally right up from this lot. Um, we just wanted to state our concerns is that we walk almost every day, and in that particular lot, we always see deer there. And one of the main reasons we moved into this subdivision as a military family was because of the nature and the wildlife, and we're just really interested in keeping that intact. And we are a little bit concerned that that would get messed up lots, those lots are, you know, built upon. That's it.
Thank you. All right. Does anybody else wish to speak on the record for or against?
I've, am I being heard?
Yes.
My name is Claudia Mosley. Can you hear me?
Yes, Claudia, can you hear us?
Yes. I back right up to this property. I, I just really am worried about the water drain off because I have been told that this builder has a tendency to strip all of the, all of the shrubbery trees and everything off of the property before he builds. And I'm really worried about the drainage as well as the wildlife. And I think it will have a, I don't, I couldn't catch the property values they estimated. But I think they were low. I think he's talking about putting lower house, lower-priced houses back there. And these houses are, are substantial houses up here on Hidden Hills Drives. I think it will hurt the property values.
All right, thank you. Does the, I see that the question, the value of the property came up with chat also. Does the applicant want to address that one real quick?
We just stated that the, the value of the homes will be in the $350,000 range of these three homes.
The what? Thousand-dollar range?
350.
Okay, okay. I thought they were lower than that.
Can I chime in and say that the one, the house that's like two down from where they're building just sold for 374, so 350 definitely is lower than the house that's literally on Canyon Road, like two doors down from where they're building. So, I think that would, you know, be an impact because that is lower. That's not higher.
That's correct. She's correct.
And there, there may, there may be some of those houses, I'm talking about an average value. We know that some of those houses that are in the development to the south are, are in the 200 to 250, 275,000 dollar range. So, in general, these houses will be, will be higher priced, higher valued than most of the surrounding lots.
All right. I see, it looks like, I can't see your full name. Marie Zipsey?
Hello, this is Bill and Marie Zipsey. We live at 503 Douting. We're, yeah, come on. You guys can hear me? Oh, thank you. So, yeah, we, we live in the Shadows area, and it's the property bordering to the north of Combs Road. And our house values in that Shadows area are much over 375. They're 400 and 500,000 dollar range in that Shadows area. So, the backyard, our backyard actually, we look out, our whole backyard is nothing but, our backside of our house is nothing but windows. And when the gentleman was down there doing a lot assessment, he was looking right in our house and everything. And so, to address property values in the Hidden Hills area, it may be comparable. But for neighboring properties that border it, it is less than our current property values. In addition to that, about the wildlife concern, we have deer bed down in our yard. There's a doe that comes around every single year and lays her fawns right in our backyard, and it's a sanctuary during hunting season. I'm a hunter, but I don't hunt in my backyard, and these animals are basically pets. And the turkeys and everything, and we've got a three, two, and a one-year-old, and my daughter, you can hear them in the background. They, uh, we lived in Old Town Bellevue when I got stationed here, and we sold our house in Old Town Bellevue and moved up to this Fontaine Hills area for a nice, safe place for our kids to play and be in the woods and see the animals. And, um, we got this specifically for, you know, a forever house. And, um, you know, that's one of our concerns. Additionally, to mention the drainage, we've had a real problem. Our house is down in the valley, and I brought in 23 dump trucks worth, like big, like 12 cubic yards of dirt every year. Or not every year, I'm sorry, cumulatively. Each year, I bring in at least 10 dump trucks of dirt to try to fill in the erosion. And down in that specific area, every time it rains, there's a huge draw, and all that drainage and sewage, or sewer drain that comes off of Bellevue Boulevard has been completely washed out. There is about a 15-foot gap between each cut where every rainstorm, it just comes through and cuts it out. So, you know, I, I understand you talk about not affecting the drainage of the people in Hidden Hills, but the people who are unfortunate enough to purchase homes that may be built there are gonna have a serious drainage issue because all the drainage from Douting Court and from Bellevue Boulevard center down that flue and are gonna wash out their yards. And it's, it's pretty thick with trees and down there, too. So, those are, those are some valid concerns, I feel. And as someone who sees it every day when I get up and have coffee getting ready to work, it's, it's gonna be a, a major undertaking to put in proper drainage to manage that type of water that comes through there, especially to keep someone's property, basement, and yard from getting washed out. Thank you very much for your time.
Larry Whiting. My very con- concern is traffic flow. Are they gonna be coming through Hidden Hills to exit, or are they gonna be going up to Boulevard, or what?
I, I will ask the applicant to address that, but can you state your name and address for the record?
Slurry Whiting, 846 Hidden Hills Drive.
Thank you. Applicant, would you like to address the traffic?
Mark Westergaard again. Stated before the...
But as far as, but as far as traffic is concerned, we fought the battle with people coming from the back road on up. And at times, cars come through here pretty fast. And like I said, that's one of my big concerns is where is the traffic going?
Okay.
So, the house, Lot 3, which is the house that fronts on Bellevue Boulevard, will have a driveway that will access Bellevue Boulevard. The other two homes will have driveways that do access Canyon Road. The traffic is normal. We, we just think that this is a, at least dense development as we do here, and it fits. And the people that are gonna buy these houses are going to have the same desires that the Rizos and the Zipseys have on wanting to move into an acreage home that has wildlife around it, trying to make it here. The, you know, the existing configuration of the, of the lots, technically, there could be three houses built there right now without even coming in for this, this replat. The replat simply modifies the dimensions so that they're, they're more buildable than any of the other lots. So, um, we just think it fits with the, with the neighborhood. It is not, we're not proposing eight or nine houses down here. It's just three homes. And we, we feel that it's a very appropriate development.
Mr. Chair, if I might, we have a few comments from Facebook Live. Marcus Brown stated, as a nearby resident, he opposed to this as it would negatively affect the wildlife in the area, um, also increased traffic in our neighborhood. He also commented, he believed he saw it would be limited to 1,200 square foot homes, which would negatively affect their home values. Kim O'Hara Soder stated, I, I support of the homeowners that are against this. They will lose a scenic view and privacy they paid for. It's what drove them to buy the house.
All right. Continuing on with that, I've got a, a message from Joni Brooks with a few questions. Their microphone is not working right now. Question is, you know, I'd like to know the price range of the proposed homes. I believe that that's been addressed as it's gonna be a $350,000 price range. A question of how does the speaker know what our home prices are? That would be Public Property Records. And then, some of the listed lots are too small to put a $350,000 house on. And just a general note, Joni Brooks against the motion. So, and a note that the property records are not up to date on current value. As their microphone's not working, I wanted to read those in. As their microphone's not working, I wanted to read those into record. Are there any further public comments for or against this, before I turn it over to the commissioners to discuss?
Hello?
Hi, yes, can everybody hear me?
This is Vic Pudge, 701 Bellevue Boulevard, would like to make a comment.
Go ahead, Vic.
Okay, a couple of concerns. The volume of water that has been through that area is fairly significant. In my memory, there are slabs of asphalt that were part of the Combs Road that intersect with Bellevue Boulevard, and of course, they have all been washed away. And I personally called MUD to repair a gully, which they pretty kindly did, as part of Combs Road, and they put in dams and a drainage system. So the volume of water is more than seems to be realized by the people that are involved in this right now. Two concerns, how will that be ameliorated and who will pay for it? Another peripheral that is more my concern than it is anybody else's, Sherwood Home sold me my property and misrepresented it as being on the city sewer. It was only months later when I tried to pay my sewer bill that I was told, proven that it was actually a septic system that was on the property that is trying to be rezoned. And I've been granted unofficially an easement of necessity, so I will have to have that clearly defined as to the drainage field and also access by road to servicing that septic system. But for the general public, who's going to pay for the drainage and the infrastructure to handle the water at the bottom of Canyon Road and Road? Thank you.
Vic, just to clarify, are you saying that the, your current septic system has a drainage field on one of the lots that are being discussed this evening?
Yes, it's about, I'm guessing 100 feet from Bellevue Boulevard, down at the bottom of the gully on, I don't have the map in front of me, but it's adjacent to my property, but down in the gully as part of the property that's being rezoned.
I'm going to turn that over to the applicant, are you aware of any septic system drainage field in or near your zone?
We, we are not, and I, I don't believe our title report identified any easements to that effect. All of these lots are going to be served by public sewer, and, and not, none of these lots will be unserved. If, if there is a septic system out there, whether it's active or not, we are not aware of it, and we're not aware of any conditions that allow that on this property.
Vic, I would suggest, no matter what the decision for tonight is, that you reach out to the city with your address, location of that septic field, so that the applicant, and have a chance to take a look to see if it's on the property and address that.
Sure, certainly will, yeah, the, we, it's been many years, of course, we had a number of correspondences between Sherwood and, and an attorney that I hired to do the correspondence. So it is well-known that it's there and where it is, I will certainly take your suggestion.
Thank you. A quick reminder for moving microphones, getting started a bit more and more.
Can I ask the applicant a question?
Before you do that, those that are not speaking right now, will you please mute your phones? I think there are several people, I'm Mosley Zipsey, your phones are not muted, would you please mute them because we can hear the background noise? Thank you.
Can't mute this.
Yep, Zipsey, we see it, yep. Haley, go ahead and ask the question.
So my question is, with all the drainage issues that are going to take place, how long is it going to take if they do get approved to build the houses, and how, how is that not going to affect the wildlife if they have to put all this time into putting extra drainage, like it's not like they can just pop houses in there? So I can't imagine how a construction site is not going to affect wildlife, I feel like it is definitely going to impact it.
I, I heard two questions there, one which is timeframe of construction, assuming that this would go in for, in front of the city council by the end of July? And then second, just addressing how you would, how your activities would affect wildlife.
How, how is building something for that, like if it's like a really long time, how is that not going to impact wildlife, basically?
Gotcha.
Charlie, I can address that, Jerry Stanover, 14711, industrial road, 68144. Our typical build time, reconstruction with a lot in place is six months, and we typically build about 60 houses a year, so we're, we're pretty, we're pretty confident that's six months. Now, that's, that's on a developed lot, at this point, we would think it would take probably four to six months to completely develop that lot, so it's something else than a year.
Six months.
And you don't think that a year is going to affect wildlife?
We think, we think that we're not tearing up a big part of that, I don't know, I'm not a wildlife expert, but that's, typically, we don't, we're not going to go in there and take, take those trees out of there from top to bottom.
Going around the table again, does anybody have more comments, concerns, want to speak anything on the record?
Could I, this is Claudia Mosley again. What are you doing about, how many trees are you taking out?
We'll only be taking out trees that are in the, really in the building envelope and in the little bit of grading that's around the house, we are not doing any mass grading out here, just enough to get the house, and the concrete for the driveways, yes.
I'm really worried, that's, that's a big gully, and it's just a natural habitat for deer and turkeys and everything, I just can't imagine how impacting that at all is going to affect their life tolerable.
I, this is Mark West again, I'll, I just bring one comment on the drainage, the, the ditch that's in Combs Road has been there for years and years and years, and what we're trying to do is, is not do a less dense development with only three homes that will not have a detrimental impact on, on that area. We understand the lost oils and the issues that are there coming down that drainage ditch in Combs Road. They're there, they've been there years and years and years, we're trying not to change it at all, not make it any worse.
How can we be sure you're only going to do three houses?
Only three lots.
You can't subdivide the lots.
We'd have to come back before this body again, then the city council, we don't plan to do that.
Claudia, the zoning that they're asking for would only allow one house per lot, so as stated, he would have to, he would have to come back to this on board and to the city council to do any more than three. Just to alleviate that concern for you.
Okay.
This is Mosley.
I'll give someone else.
I'm sorry. Your address, please, for the record.
Oh wait, not her, the lady who just.
But maybe, Claudia Mosley is 841 Hidden Hills Drive, and I have two lots backing directly into that property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, this is, this is the Zipseys again at 503 Douting Court. I guess our main question, my husband summed up the drainage concerns and everything fairly adequately, I would say. Our concern is that if you only plan on building three houses back there, why is the rezoning necessary?
I can't agree with it. More questions again, as we stated in the beginning, there's a, there's a logical, the sewer, sewer that comes down between lots one and two, that was a logical approach to have a lot line, so lots two and three are well over an acre, which is in the RA. Because of that lot line that is, is, the location that it's at, lot one, ends up being about 0.65 acres, so it's a little less than is required for our, which is one acre, so that's why we requested the RS120 zone, which is what most of the neighborhoods around there are.
Janet Kavetsky. 831 Hidden Hills Drive.
Go ahead.
Yes, I'm just, I want to speak against this simply because I see constant drainage problems, and we always have Bellevue city work, working on the gullies. So there is a significant draining problem, and I can't see that taking out more natural environment will eliminate it, I think it will just exasperate it, and I, I'm just totally against it, I just don't have any confidence that this company will care once they're gone, and then we're dealing with the issues of erosion. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Mr. Ritz, this is Tammy Paul, sorry, I, we had some technical difficulties, but I am back, we have a couple comments, Facebook Live.
Okay.
From Marcus Brown, the first one is, I agree with Mrs. Mosley, removal of the trees will affect the erosion from above, and what happens when erosion becomes a problem, who is going to cover the cost of the damages?
That's the two comments we have from Facebook Live, Mr. Ritz.
All right.
This is Vic, yeah, this is Vic Pudge again with the same concern.
All right, noted.
With the removal of vegetation and the building of houses, flat roof, or roofing with drainage coming off the roofing, driveways, and whatever roadways are necessary, is going to compound the water problem reaching the bottom of this property where Combs Road intersects with Canyon Road. Combs Road being a gravel road with ditches on the side, and no real storm sewer provisions. It can be, it can be fixed, and it can be done, but who's going to pay for it to avoid the applicant making a profit off the taxpayers of Bellevue?
I don't know who it was.
All right, noted. Wanted to make sure, Tammy, do I, do we need to read all of the public comments on the chat here into record, or how do we want to address that?
If you want to read some of the comments that have come up, that would be great, we can enter those into the record, and then we can close the public hearing if that's it, and then we'll let the applicant answer some of the questions, and we'll go from there.
All right. Can, continuing on from where I left off earlier, this is from Joni Brooks, who is at 829 Hidden Hills Drive. The port, that portion of the wooded area from Bellevue Boulevard South down to Combs Canyon is a paper street, this was tried many years ago and failed because of runoff slash washout. Also states, some of the lots are too small for a $350,000 home to be built on. Mary, the Laheys at 843 Hidden Hills Drive are against the development due to the water issues and negative impact of wildlife. That is all the public comments I see on chat. Oh, one more just came in from Joni, I am the lowest house of Hidden Hills, the city has repaired two areas with significant drainage issues. All right. Is there anyone else that wishes to say anything further, pro or against the applicant or the motion right now, before I turn it over to?
Apparently Liz Lacy input. Apparently Liz Lacy input.
Can you please repeat that?
Maybe we have some people on that don't have their microphones muted.
Okay.
There are no more comments from Facebook.
All right, I see one more comment from Joni, which is, this will compound the problem for Hidden Hills. Last call for anyone that wishes to speak.
I have a question.
All right, Mr., yep.
My name is Benny Rizzo, I live at 840 Hidden Hills, and, okay, well, my question is, I heard pretty much a minimum of a year build time, if they were to get this, would they build concurrently? Are we looking at three years, one house at a time?
Jerry Stanover, 14711, industrial road, again, typically, my thought is that we're probably going to build two, not all three, probably the two lower ones separately from the one on top.
So what's a realistic timeframe then? From start to finish for all, for all properties?
I, I can't, I can't tell you exactly months and there are weeks and days on that, I can tell you that if we build two houses on, on the lower side, from the, when we tip, put the foundation in, until the house is completed, it's typically six months. Not saying we couldn't start, start the other house up on top at the, at the same time, or sometime during that construction.
All right.
Hey, I have, sorry, I have one more, could you please speak to the comment that was made earlier about the lots being too small for that price of a house?
Certainly, maybe you can tell, tell how big the lots are, Mark. Well, so the lots are 1.24 acres, 1.098 acres, and 0.643 acres, so just, and that might not mean anything to any of you, but a, a normal, a normal good-sized residential lot is usually about a quarter of an acre. So these are about, these are four, three or four times larger than a normal residential lot.
Yeah, that, that seems like a very large amount to develop on in those specific areas.
Act on wildlife to me.
Can you say that one more time, I only caught the second half of it.
I was saying, three acres seems like a lot of impact for wildlife, especially if you're talking about this spanning over a year, why would the, why would the animals stay in this area, it makes no sense, they would just leave, you definitely, and you guys, why would we even agree to something where you don't even seem to have set plans? You, you can't even tell us anything definitive, so why would anybody be okay with something when you don't even have like real plans in motion, y'all, it seems like you haven't actually like addressed anything there to me. You're just asking us to be okay with an idea of you guys taking three acres and taking a while to build houses.
We're done now.
Uh, last call, any more, Tammy, wrap this up or I'm going to wrap up the public hearing with making sure there's nothing more on Facebook.
Nothing more on Facebook Live, Mr. Chair.
All right.
Can I respond to a couple of things?
Yes.
Uh, so there's a lot of discussion about how feelings that this is, is too dense of a development, that three homes is too many. Just went through some real, they're really rough, but the amount of area we have reserved for, for disturbed for these houses with the mountains is something on the order of five percent of the land down there. So they give, you know, we're not talking about even disturbing a quarter of the land or half the land. We're talking about five percent here. It's a very small amount. And that leads into my other comment about the drainage of Combs Road, which is Combs Road, even though there isn't a road there, it is public right of way. It's actually the city's responsibility. Tammy, I don't know if we have anybody from engineering on there. I know there has been some historic issues there that have to be, be fixed. All we're trying to do is do a least dense development that will not have a negative impact on the, the problems that are there currently and have been for years and years and years. And that's, unless you guys have anything else, that's all I have to say, thank you. Yeah, I, I would like to address, Jerry Stanford, I would like to address a bit about, about the wildlife and how long it takes to build the houses. You know, we've done a ton of work in Bellevue over the years, along by the hill and down by the hill's golf course. We put in there, it seems to me like from the top of the hill down to the clubhouse, the houses on the east side. If I recall, that was about a three-year project, start to finish. I know that the wildlife, maybe they go somewhere, maybe they, they go to adjacent properties, adjacent forests, maybe they go into the forest. I know wildlife is abundant there. It's the same in Hidden Hills or any of those subdivisions where there are trees and abundant trees like there are here. You know, the construction process is, is the same. And you don't see the wildlife disappear and not, and not be there, just like in the houses. And you're in, Mr. Rizzo, in your neighborhood, when those houses were, were built, Mr. Zipski. So those houses are built in there, same type of deal when the trees were removed, when the grading was done. And it was considered the more graded in Hidden Hills when that was developed than we're talking about doing, doing right now. So I, I don't see that it chases, that it chases the deer away. But you know, I guess that's, that's your opinion. That's, but that's been our experience is that those areas do come back, uh, are once the houses are built, there's deer in every yard.
Thank you. Uh, I am now going to close the public hearing and turn it over to the commissioners.
Could I make one, could I make one comment, please?
Last comment then, yep. State your name one more time.
This is Grant Everett. I live at seven eleven Bellevue Boulevard South. I just have one, uh, one pretty good question. In addition to the wildlife and potential traffic issues, what has changed since the last time this was brought forward? And all those drainage issues kept them from doing it? What has changed?
All right. Your question is noted. I'm going to turn it over to the commissioners and we are going to discuss, I have a few questions on the drainage myself, so. Um, but I am going to formally close the public hearing and turn it over to commissioners.
Mr. Ritz, this is Tammy Palm, just one more comment from Facebook Live, if we could.
Yeah, this is the last Facebook Live. It might have already been covered, but the question is, how would construction equipment access the building site? If through Combs Road, the heavy equipment and traffic is going to affect the gravel road? And where are the construction crews going to park?
If we could let the applicant address that.
Yes.
Sure. Jerry Stanford, again. The heavy, the heavy trucks that we're talking about, the heaviest equipment that we bring down there are the cement trucks. And you know, I can't tell you what the impact on home road is. We don't tear up, in every residential area we work in, we bring the same cement trucks. That's the heaviest, that's the heaviest equipment that goes there. Typically, we won't see more than four or five vehicles on that job at a time, uh, workers. We don't put twenty, twenty man crews, we don't have twenty man crews to put, put on something like that. So part of the parking will have to be along the street and then part of the apartment will be offsite on, on the site we're working.
That's all from Facebook Live.
Okay. Mr. Ritz, if I might before, this is Tammy Palm again, City of Bellevue. Um, if I could address some of the drainage questions and the questions about what has changed. Um, Mr. Westergaard referenced this a few times in his comments, but previously we've seen applications that have had more density, have had more lots for home building. That's not the case with this application. There are currently three platted lots down there that they could build on now without this application or rezoning request or anything of the nature. Um, so they're not creating any additional lots down there. Um, it's three lots. Our engineering team at the city has looked at their preliminary grading and drainage plans and has found them to be acceptable. So with grading and drainage, um, the builder and the developer have to meet certain requirements that are agreed upon by the Papillion Watershed Agreement that everyone in the Omaha Metro follows. And again, those plans have all been approved by our city engineers. So these folks cannot negatively impact what is already occurring in the area. They can't make it worse in any way. Um, potentially, you know, I, it could even make it better, um, you know, by some of the things that are occurring in there. But that's just a little bit on drainage and how this application is different from what we have seen in the past.
All right. I'm going to close public hearing then and turn it over to the commissioners. Commissioners, thoughts?
This is Commissioner Scott Hankins, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, um, I am a real estate appraiser and real attorney in Bellevue. Um, I was a little concerned that the homeowners are thinking that this property will lessen the value of theirs, which is totally false. Um, if anything, it'll increase your property values. Um, I also work with the Sarpy County Assessors. So if you guys have any questions about how they value properties, I'd recommend giving them a call. So just wanted to make that public statement.
Other commissioners? Arnie?
Can you guys hear me? I'm having some connection issues this evening. Good. I, just a couple, a couple of clarifications for staff. Um, so Tammy, I think you mentioned it, I just want to, I want to clarify for the Hidden Hills Homer Associations that sent the letter in and that folks are on tonight. Somebody could come in today and build three homes on these three lots without even coming before the city planning commissioner or city council, correct?
That is correct. There are, there's multiple lots there currently, two are rather large, one is a little bit smaller. But, um, you know, under the current zoning, somebody could realistically make something happen if they wanted to.
As part of that, they could remove trees without needing to come before the city, correct? They could go in there, remove what trees they needed to do and build three homes there?
Correct.
Okay. Um, and then there's been a lot of conversation about wildlife. I'm a, I'm an outdoorsman myself, but I don't believe that this commission has anything in our zoning code or zoning regulations that deals with wildlife. So for us to not approve an application based on hurting wildlife, I don't think that we can do that. Am I correct? Is there anything in wildlife regulations within the zoning ordinance or zoning code?
No, sir, there are not.
Okay. Um, one more question, just curious, why, why are we not requiring public street improvements as part of this?
As I mentioned in the staff report, um, the public works engineers were okay with not having an improved street. Um, Combs Road would be very difficult to improve because of the drainage, because of the slope. Part of the reason you're only seeing three developable lots here is because of the Combs Road access issue. So that's why you've got one lot taking access off of Bellevue Boulevard. You have one lot directly fronting onto Canyon Road and then you have only one other lot that will take access through an access easement off of Canyon Road. Um, a lot of discussion occurred about whether or not Combs Road could and should be improved. And in the end, like I said, our public works engineers, um, were in agreement that it was probably best to leave it as is. So the only improvement, I know Mr. Westergaard mentioned this, the only improvement that was requested was the improvement to the intersection of Combs Road and Canyon Road. So that pavement will be extended and the intersection will be improved.
Thank you. So, so here's my, my comment to all the commissioners. So somebody could come in today and build three homes on this area without coming before us. They could remove trees without coming before us. We have no regulatory authority on, on wildlife and, and I know Sherwood Homes is a good builder, good developer, reputable builder in Omaha. I think, I think we're safer with one builder building on all three lots as opposed to three individual homeowners or three individual builders. Cause I think they're going to plant it and they're going to take out all the trees at the same time. They're going to prevent, you know, prepare the drainage, keep the drainage as best they can as opposed to three individual homeowners. And maybe instead of this taking a year, it might take four years to build three houses on there. So I'm in support of the application. Thank you.
Rich Casey with a question for staff for clarification. Has there, Tammy, been any previous attempts to develop this property?
Yes, um, there was, the most recent one was about four years ago. Um, we did have an application for preliminary plat and rezoning. That was the most recent attempt that I can remember. Uh, Mr. Stanford might be able to speak better to the history. But yes, there, there have been other attempts to develop, like Mr. Westergaard referred to earlier. This attempt is the least dense option that we've ever had come before us.
And I'll follow up with Mr. Stanford. Can you expand on any of that? Who attempted to build and what, what was the reason they did not proceed?
Yes, certainly. The only, the only time that I recall was about four years ago. We looked at that, we looked at putting eight houses in there. And after we got into it a little bit further and we decided that we were going to be, that we would be using up, we'd been taking a lot of trees out of there. We decided that, that it wasn't, it wasn't worth doing. It would have been, it would have been a single, single point access. So again, similar to where we have now, we would try to service six houses or seven houses from that point, keeping the one up on top. So it didn't make sense to us to, to do that and so we just withdrew it. It wasn't like we were turned down, like we went as far as going to planning. And I don't know, I think we made the application, but that's as far as I recall that we went at that time. I don't recall ever trying to do anything else with this piece of ground, at least since in the last 30 years.
Thank you. I'm going to chime in with a few questions for, questions and comments. My first is staff. Um, somebody brought up a question earlier of that they, they are stating that they have a current septic system drainage field on the property. Would that affect any decision that we have tonight if, if this is approved? And then it is discovered that that's on there, is that going to derail this issue?
I don't believe it could derail it. Um, that's an item that would have to be worked through with the developer. Um, and again, Mr. Westergaard might be able to comment. They've been out there, um, doing surveying work. He's, uh, familiar with the property, but, um, it's something that could be worked through depending on where the location of that is.
Yeah. Uh, my comments on the wildlife, uh, Mr. Arnie, you are correct. There's no specific things that we have in there to address wildlife. Um, the general note that we do have is perceived negative influence on the neighborhood. Now, for a record, I live pretty much on the opposite side of Bellevue Cemetery from this. So much of the same wildlife that they are talking about, my kids see right outside our door all the time. Um, my personal opinion is that you, it would be disrupted for this construction period. Um, you know, where the deer nest at or sit at, whatever. I'm not a wildlife expert, I don't know the right terms, would be affected, but following construction, um, I honestly believe that they would move right back in. I've seen deer be very, and all the wildlife be very resilient. Um, I've seen a turkey take nest in somebody's garden three doors down from you. So, um, I do think that this would have impacted wildlife, but that the impact would be reduced over time. Um, I just want to let you know that is, that was a serious thought of mine while reading through this. Um, my question about drainage, is this development or any of these development large enough that it's going to require a formal SWAP, Stormwater Waste Plan? Or is that not going to be required for any of these, once they're, um, start development? And that's directed to staff?
Yeah, depending on the amount of acres disturbed, they would have to file a SWAP plan. Um, again, that'll be based on what they disturb, but, uh, our engineering department has looked at preliminary grading and drainage and they are okay with the plans that have been submitted.
Okay. Um, my only comment, I guess, just to alleviate my concern on it. Um, I don't think that three additional houses would create more drainage, but, um, if staff could confirm that, uh, the drainage changes for the way that it flows based on where these properties are, um, would have to continue the way they were before it was developed. I.e., if you put a new development, if you regrade and it changes the flow of water into a different direction, that would not be allowed. Is that correct?
Basically, they can't negatively impact the surrounding development. So, um, you know, any change in the current pattern out there now would have to be taken care of. So they can't increase the amount of water that somebody else is taking on.
Okay. So basically, the way I view this is that the drainage in that area is not good. Uh, I went out there, I saw the slopes, I saw how things are going to drain. It's, it's a big issue to deal with. I saw, I've looked at the plans that they presented preliminary and that they've discussed. Um, so I don't believe that it would negatively make, I don't think it would make the situation worse, is I guess where I'm saying. Um, based, uh, from doing this versus what they are already allowed to do on that property with the current zoning. Um, my last question is kind of my crux question, which is, um, has any thought been given by the developer for lots two and one to be incorporated into the HOA? And the reason that I suggest that is that where the streets lay for this location, unless somebody's working in Old Town Bellevue, they will be going through, um, Hidden Hills every single day to and from work. Um, there's just no better path to drive than that. And so I guess my thought and just suggestion, we don't have kind of authority over this, but my suggestion would be to discuss with the HOA incorporating those two houses into it, just as a gesture of neighborly goodwill. Um, like I said, that's not something we have jurisdiction over, just kind of a, a thought and suggestion for things.
This is John Follon Camp, 1440 West Center Road, I'm Jerry's attorney. When HOAs have set up, unfortunately, they're set up on a designated area and those are their covenants and, um, their declarant rights and so forth. So it's probably pretty difficult. Now, that being said, it's probably be something that I think we could do, but we're certainly, we'll sit down and talk to these folks and try to ameliorate their concerns. Again, to reiterate here, three. Again, to reiterate here, three houses of three lots in, in an area that we're trying to be as environmentally sensitive as you can. So we certainly express our willingness to, to talk to them and try to see if there's something we can resolve there and find out what their issues are with regard to the actual HOA. It's a matter of paying dues to them or something. I guess I'm not totally understanding what you're asking other than for us to have some communication with them and be a good neighbor.
I just, a general that where these, where you're proposing to locate these with the road that they're connecting to, would essentially, they would be part of that Hidden Hills development by just all views except for a name. And just to, you know, further conformity to the area that all the houses are equal in such, just a suggestion, like I said, it's not anything that we have jurisdiction over. It's, I understand HOA fees, I understand that that impacts sellability of a lot, all of those things, I understand that it's difficult to modify the covenants for that. It was just kind of a suggestion of, you know, while I'm thinking about it.
Sure. Just to follow, we'd be happy to have those discussions with their representatives. Frankly, the color of my hair, I've been doing zoning cases a long time, and I will tell you what often, often happens in a case like this is the very people who live in this neighborhood are maybe looking for a little bigger house or a little nicer house, they love their neighborhood, they love the things that are in the neighborhood. Oftentimes, we find that that, in fact, is the market here, because it's not in our best interest to be adversary to the neighbors at all. That's why we tried to design something here that was environmentally sensitive and the least amount of impact, you know, fit well within everybody's regulations. So certainly, we would be happy to have those discussions.
Mr. Chair, if I might add a question?
Yes, Leland?
Thank you. You know, I'm generally in support of the comments I've heard from Commissioner Arnie and yourself and Mr. Hankins as well, Commissioner Hankins. Question I have for the developer goes along the line of the construction duration that you're describing. You're getting across a couple nesting seasons, so I'm a little concerned about the migratory bird treaty act and compliance with that during the construction season. Could you address that, please?
We'll, we'll comply with tree removal that is in the timeframes, that is in accordance with the guidelines and the law.
Very good. Thank you.
I guess one more question for staff. The RS 120 zoning that they are requesting does have a minimum size for the properties that they would put on there, correct?
The minimum lot size is 12,000 square feet. As Mr. Guard, Mr. Westergaard mentioned, these are considerably larger than that. Two of them are over an acre, one of them is .6 acres, so between half acre and a three quarter acre lot. So they far exceed the guidelines of the minimum 12,000 square foot requirement.
I guess I was more directing at the actual, any house that would be built on there. Is there any requirements for minimum square footage for those houses?
No, there's no requirement in zoning for minimum square footage on houses. It's just setbacks, lot coverage and lots, but we don't control the, the actual size of the homes.
Other commissioners, thoughts, wishes?
Mr. Ritz?
Mr. Arnie?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to approve item 3A as requested.
Motion by Arnie?
Second by Jacobson.
Second by Hankins.
By Arnie, second by Jacobson.
In terms of discussion, I believe staff asked for an amendment to the future land use map if this was recommended for approval, item seven on page four, if you'd like to amend your motion.
Mr. Ackley makes a good point. The original proposal did include a motion or an amendment to the future land use map for this area. Mr. Arnie, would you care to restate your motion?
Sure. So I'll make a motion to approve the part as requested with the amendment recommended by staff.
My second still stands. Jacobson?
Motion by Arnie, second by Jacobson. Will there be a new electronic voting window or do I just click the same one? That's the one that's popped up right now. Just click the same one.
I do not have the pop-up. I don't have the pop-up.
Ms. Kane, what is your vote?
I'm not getting anything.
I will, I will for you.
My vote is yes.
Motion carried.
This will go to the city council on July 21st for the public hearing.
Thank you.
Continuing on, we are at item 3B, request to sub, small subdivision plat lots one through eight, Hillcrest replat V, being a replat of lot 46 Hillcrest Edition located in the northwest corridor of section 26 township 14N, R13E of the sixth prime meridian, Sarpy County, Nebraska. Applicant Michelle Williams, general location 1908 East Greg Road, case number S dash 2005 dash 07. Not seeing them. I will now open this up to public hearing. Does anybody wish to speak on the record for or against this ma, this matter? Staff, is there anyone on Facebook that wishes to speak for or against this matter?
Nobody on Facebook.
Nobody on Facebook.
I will close the public hearing for this and switch it over to the commissioners. Commissioners, thoughts, wishes?
This is Casey, hearing nothing, I would make the motion for approval based on conformance, conformance with zoning ordinance subdivision regulations, lack of perceived negative impact on the surrounding area.
Motion by Casey?
Second by Cutts fourth.
Ms. Kane, what is your vote?
I vote yes.
You vote yes? Motion carried.
Were you able to hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Go forward. Staff, is there any current business to discuss?
No current business. Mr. Ritz, that one will go to public hearing, of course, city council, July 7th.
Yes, I apologize for that. That will go to public hearing July 7th to make sure it was on the record. All right. With no current business, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Motion by Ackley?
Second by Cutts fourth.
Second by Cutts fourth.
Motion carried.
Thank you, everyone.
We'll see you all next month.
See you next month. Bye.
Bye.
Bye, everyone.
Bye, everyone.
Ms. Van Horn?
Yes. I think they took her away before she could ask her question.
Okay. I marked her as yes for adjourned.
I think she said yes. We're good. We're.